Okay, good evening, everybody. Altadena and neighboring communities. I would like to call the meeting to order for the Altadena Town Council for the month of February. So today is February 21st, 2017. The meeting is hereby called to order. First thing, pledge of allegiance. And how about Councilmember Robinson?
... Right hand over your heart. Ready, again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, roll call. Recording Secretary, Councilmember Habdi.
I am...
Judy's here.
Oh.
Yay!
When your name is called, please announce your presence, please. Ann Crum, I believe she has excused absence.
That's correct.
Okay. Dean Cooper? Nestor Delatory? Okori Izimi?
Present.
Damon Hobbie?
I'm present.
Ann Langston?
Here.
Okay. Jennifer Lee?
Here.
I believe Billy Malone has an excused absence.
That's correct, too.
Okay. Diane Marcusson?
Here.
Judy Matthews, myself present. Brent Musson?
Present.
Justin Robinson?
Uh, here.
Okay. Gloria Sannica?
Here.
Patricia Sutherland?
Here.
Sylvia Vega?
Present.
John White?
Present.
Okay, it looks like we have, we have two excused absences and a quorum of 14.
Thank you so much. February 28th, I'm sorry, February 21st, 2017, the agenda is before you, so... Is there, are there any additions?
Yes. I just noticed, Okori, that you, that there was a, the actual item below each action item for land use needs to have a public comment.
Ah, right.
Right, so, under 511, I guess it ends up being 51111. And, public comment, and then, under 512, should be 5121, I think, right?
Yeah.
Public comment under that.
Okay, so you're saying we add 5.11.1? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I would, I would put a, I would put a point in between each one of those.
Right. 5.1.1.1, and that will be comments?
Public comment.
Okay. And then, we do the 5.1.2.1.
Point one.
Okay.
Public comment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The other thing is that, for the... I'm looking at, just one moment. One of the presenters, I did not put in the name, and that will be for the county fire. I believe the name is Robert, or Bob Haskell, or, who is the battalion chief, or Assistant Chief Gregory Heisler. So, I'm not sure, excuse me, exactly who will be presenting. Maybe I'll just leave it the way it is. So, for the agenda, the, the only addition that we have will be the 5.1.1.1, which is the comment for, public comments, and the 5.1.2.1, which would be also public comments.
Um, I have the name of the person that is going to be presenting about the bike lane, if you want to add it.
Okay. How about we do that?
And, that is Sholeh, S-H-O-E, I'm sorry, H-S-H-O-L-E-H-A-N, sorry, A-N-S-A-R-I.
Say that again, please.
She's with the Department of Public Works Programs Development Division.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, there are three additions, as we've discussed, so, okay, go ahead.
I believe we need to strike the... Isn't a film committee?
No.
No, someone will report on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, you've heard the changes to the agenda. Do I have a motion for the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All right, so, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, so, that is the agenda for tonight. I will try to move on it as quickly as we can for tonight. All right, the chairman's report. I have several things, but I'd like to start with the, just before I get to the meeting, there was a... Okay, is that better? There was a note, there was a, an email from Aldi, so, I'm going to...
No, please don't. No, please don't, sorry. My apologies, that's wrong. Sorry.
This is under the...
I understand, but it's, that is not the date. It was sent out in error.
Okay.
Certainly the corrected date, for what it's worth.
In April?
Yes.
Okay, let's not, if we could hold off, please, Okori.
Okay, for the chairman's report, so, we'll strike that out for a moment, but let me say that it looks like Aldi will be opening sometime soon, and we will keep you posted. Okay. The other thing that I would like to also mention is that the Measure A implementation, I had actually asked Councilmember Cumming to report on that, but unfortunately, she didn't make it tonight. The Supervisor, Catherine Barger, has invited community leaders to what is called Park Funding 101, Measure A implementation, the next steps. This event will be, will take place on Wednesday, February 22nd, which is tomorrow, from 9:00 to 11:00, at the LA County Arboretum and Botanic Garden, 301 North Baldwin Avenue, in Arcadia. The other thing that I'd like to mention, and I'm sure someone else will talk about it, is to welcome the new Director of the Collaborative Pasadena, and I know you'll be talking about that. There is an event on March, March 8th, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and this will take place at La Catedral Arroyo, 177 South Arroyo Drive, in Pasadena. And I know Councilwoman Matthews will be talking about the 41st Assembly. I'm just giving some update of some of the things that I've been, the council has been inviting, and we want to be visible in the community, so, I'm making an open announcement, so that the council will make every effort to be there. There is a 41st Assembly Open House featuring Women of Distinction Recognition, so, I know you'll talk a little bit more about that. The Pasadena Unified School District Board election. Altadena has two districts that we participate, so, this year, the election will be for District 1, and the candidates are the incumbent Kimberly Kenny and Rita Miller. I did reach out to both of them, but I, I did say to them that they can present if both agree to come, so, that did not happen. So, but I just want to encourage Altinas, Altinas that are in that District 1 to get out and vote. We do participate in what is going on with the Pasadena Unified School District. I would like to thank Councilmembers Matthews and Langston for your efforts in the homeless count, so, I want, I wanted to come directly from me. You guys did an excellent job, and I would like to also thank the other council members, and the, most especially, the community for participating. My understanding is that there were more than 60 people that participated, we needed that, we needed that visibility, and I thank you so much. This one, I'm going to read it. This is the first time, I believe, that I've taken this long, but I'll, I'll do this so that I don't have to say much for the rest of the meeting. On January 7th, this is, this is for the council members, I just want to address this. On January 7th, 2000, I'm sorry, January 9th, 2017, I asked council members to reread the bylaws, note any possible revisions, clearly explain why, offer preferred changes, and submit to the Altadena Executive Council by February 14th for further review. The executive committee reviewed and received and reviewed one submission from Councilmember Robinson. The information submitted warrants further exploration. In light of the foregoing, I will like, I will be appointing a bylaw committee to further look into the documents submitted by Councilmember Robinson for purposes of making a recommendation to the executive council for presentation, to the entire council for further action. I would like a committee of five council members. Please, council members, send me an email if you would like to serve on the bylaw committee by no later than March 7th, 2017, so, I'm looking for volunteers to serve on the bylaw committee. Finally, maybe Councilmember Marcusson, would you like to, at some point, talk about the CSD that is coming up? So, should I defer that to you? Is that okay?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay. You should have received notice of public hearing from the Board of Supervisors concerning Project R-2016-00348, and also, Advanced Planning Number 201600640, Environmental Assessment Number 2016002556, and the Altadena Community Standard District Update. The hearing is scheduled Tuesday, February 28th, at 9:30 AM, Room 381B. That is the Kennet Hall, Hall of Admini, Kennet Hon Hall of Administration. The address is 500 West Temple Street, Los Angeles, California. Interested persons will be given an opportunity to testify. So, again, this is about the Altadena Community Standard Districts that we all worked on so hard. I believe that's really all that I have for tonight. So, Vice Chairman's Report, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening to the community, and good evening, council members. The agenda that was set, that is set before you was comprised and approved by the executive committee. The executive committee consists of myself, Damon Hobbie, Judy Matthews, Patricia Sutherland, Okori Izimi, and Billy Malone. If you'd like to be on that agenda, council members or the community, please inform us by the second Monday of each month, we meet the second Tuesday of each month in the evening in a closed-door session. So, please inform one of the council members, that is, the executive committee council members, that you would like to be considered on the agenda, and we will make the appropriate decision at that time. Additionally, if you have a public comment, you'd like to comment on item 5.1.1, which is the AT&amp;T CUP, or 5.1.2, which is Moda's Mexican Restaurant, you'd like to comment on that, please fill out a comment card. If you'd like to comment and make a general public comment, you'll be able to do so at the end of the meeting. Please fill out a comment card and give it to Judy Matthews or Dean over there, and you will be considered. Lastly, to the council members, council members, if you have a change in your information, addresses, phone numbers, and things of that nature, please inform our corresponding secretaries so information can be put on the website, so individuals within the community can contact us, and they don't get a busy, busy signal of a loss of phone that's not working, or an address that doesn't work. And that's it for me.
Thank you so much. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, Mr. Hobbie?
Yes.
Was there any deliberation on the request or the bylaws receipt that you guys had in the executive committee?
I'm sorry, didn't hear you.
Any deliberation?
What do you mean deliberation?
Well, I, I think the chairman mentioned that he received one response pursuant to his, his query.
Yes.
And so, it was received by the executive committee.
That's right.
So, I was wondering, did, in fact, you all discuss anything pursuant to that bylaw change?
We did discuss, and that's why the chair indicated that we were going to appoint an executive, a bylaws committee to head up that effort, so that we have a clearly cohesive idea of what things need to be changed, and those changes will be made and presented to the, the, everybody, so that everybody can, can look at those.
Yeah, respectively. I'm just asking, what was the, the...
The conversation?
Yeah, the conversation, yeah, basically.
Well, the conversation was with respect to appointing a bylaw committee. We only had one submission out of 16 council members.
Sure.
So, we want to make sure we do it appropriately and professionally. We want to include everybody, so, what we decided to do, we decided to appoint a bylaw committee of five persons that will head up the committee. They will look at the bylaws in totality. The necessary changes that they deem fit will be made. There will be a presentation of a redline copy of the bylaws that will show the original language and the language that's proposed. That, that information will then be sent to the council members. The council members will have an opportunity to review that, make their own suggestions, and then, it's going to be like the CSD, it's going to be a vote on that.
And I appreciate that.
That was the conversation.
My question is much more elementary than that. What was the bylaw?
I'm sorry?
What was the bylaw change that came into the executive committee?
Well, the bylaw changes were submitted by Justin, and there were a lot of those changes.
I think you're asking what specific things were changed, were requested to be changed? Is that what you're asking?
Specifically, yeah. What was the discussion?
There were a list of things, which is the reason that it was determined we're not going to sit and discuss it ourselves.
Could you give me, could you give me one, one of the bylaw requests?
You know, I'm...
There were more than that?
Well, Justin, you know, you know one, you have many, so, why don't you tell us?
Article 4, Article 3, Article 2? It's just simplistically, what was discussed?
Okay, in the interest of time, hold on one second. What we will do, to be prudent, is that the bylaw committee will, I hope, will provide a copy of that to the rest of the council members, so, it, it will be in the hands of the bylaws committee. There were, I think, four pages or so, and that, we do not have that kind of time to start dissecting the bylaws at this point. That's why we have decided to set up a bylaw committee that will handle that. If you would like to serve on that committee, I'm pretty sure you'll probably get a head, a head start on that. Would you be interested?
The point of my question was really specific to Article 4, C2B. That was it.
Okay.
And that is to hear what was discussed. And, and you can certainly do, brevity, you can certainly abbreviate.
We did not, we did not discuss any details. It was submitted, it was read, and was deemed to be sufficient enough to warrant setting up a bylaw committee, and that is what the executive council did. We did not pick, pick on each item to discuss, but it was very elaborate. All right, and I'd like for you to get in on the bylaw committee, if you don't mind, and I'd like you to respond as quickly as possible. All right, the next thing is the...
Minutes.
Just hold on, I'm just getting there. Okay. Recording Secretaries, approval of the minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Council, you were, you were provided the draft minutes of January 17th, 2017, with the response date of Monday, February 20th, for any comments. I received a comment from Justin, and I emailed him because it was pertaining to a drop letter missing in the word Ralph. However, I had noticed the omission of the letter, and had already made the correction. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Not hearing none, I move that the January 17th, 2017 meeting minutes are accepted as amended.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved, double seconded. I take Councilmember Damon. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstention?
Abstain.
One abstention, no opposition. Treasurer's Report?
The balance in the account as of the end of January is $2,195.84. The addition to the account was $70 in donations that was received in December after the, after the bank statement at the end of the year. And, oops, forgot. Please remember that we do live only by donations, so, we will pass our can around, and we hope everyone will be generous. Okay, can you send that around, please?
All right.
That's all.
All right, thank you so much. Correspondent Secretaries' Report? Billy is not here today, and he is excused because of a death in the family, so, Billy, we are with you, and we extend our condolences to you. Did he ask anybody to do any? I don't think we have anything. Okay. All right. Public Safety Reports, California Highway Patrol.
Good evening, everybody. Officer Mike Weo at the Altadena CHP Office. Thanks for having me. Hope you're having a nice evening. Traffic collisions for the month of January, oops, I kicked that, are the following. We had 25 traffic collisions. I was a little surprised when I pulled these numbers, because, given all the rain that we've had in the month of January, I was expecting that number to be considerably higher. It wasn't, so, that was a good thing. 10 of those traffic collisions were property damage only. There were eight that involved injury. One was fairly severe. The person is expected to recover from those injuries. There was one that was DUI-related. On the enforcement side of things, traffic citations, I don't have that information for you. The ball was dropped at our Southern Division, and I didn't get that information, so, I'll get back to you next month on that one. We had no fatalities, so, that's great. And then, there was one other unrelated DUI arrest. I was told to keep this real brief, so, I will. In and around the area of the Altadena, in the Altadena office, things are looking pretty good. Our priorities are up, so, we're going to be deploying plenty of officers in and around the community, coupled with myself, so, you'll see us out and about. If you have a problem or a concern, please get with us, so we can know about that situation and do our best to resolve that traffic-related issue. I don't know if anybody heard, but Officer Cooper, my kind of partner in crime for the cops position, in and around the community, was hurt recently in a, in a traffic collision. It was dark, it was raining. He was exiting the freeway on his way home, and a motorist came up behind him and slammed into the back of his patrol motorcycle. He was ejected from that motorcycle, and he subsequently struck the roadway. As of the moment, I don't know if he has any broken bones, but as you can well imagine, he is in a lot of pain, so, I'm going to be without his services for quite a while, I'm thinking, I hope, because he helps me out a lot. And then, moving on, I, from the, on behalf of the Altadena CHP Office, I would like to extend my sincere condolences to the family that is the Whittier Police Department for the tragic loss that they suffered this week. I can't imagine, as an agency, having to go through something like that. I'm not going to leave this on a low point. You guys might have heard me talk about this last year, and it was an event, it was a fun event, called the 626 Golden Streets. It's a run, a walk, a bicycling event. It's going to be held Sunday, March 5th, 2017. I'll leave these flyers in the back, they're kind of neat-looking. And then, first come, first served. I've got three Golden Road, Gold Line stickers, they're up for grabs on the back desk. So, if you have something, if you don't have anything planned for Sunday, March 5th, try and check it out, it should be a fun event. And then, one last thing before I leave you, we did get a final announcement on our upcoming captain that's going to be coming to the Altadena office. His name is Jesse Holgeen, and he will be reporting March 1st, so, we look forward to working with him. Jesse's probably got, probably about 25 years of service, and he's a really great guy, so, we look forward to working with him. And with that, if there's any questions, leave it up to you.
Go ahead.
I just had two quick ones, I think. The, are you going to, I know now you're down, Officer Cooper, but are you going to be, when you're stepping up your patrolling, are you going to be looking at the school, out in front of the schools? I know that has been a traditional place that you guys have been, or that Officer Cooper was concentrating on, because some of the parents...
The school zones are my priority, being in the cops position. That's what, that's my number-one complaint area, not only from the administration, but from a family, dropping off their students, and then, also, obviously, picking up their students after school is over. But I will be stepping that up. We had some events going on in the month of January that kind of pulled us away from those things, but we're going to get back to it, for sure, this month.
Okay. I just had another quick one that, okay, that just left my head as I was thinking about it. No, I'll get back to you later.
I have plenty of senior months.
Yeah, I know.
I'm so forgetful anymore, it's terrible.
I know. The schools and the, doesn't matter, never mind. I'll get back to you.
Surveys?
No, I'll, I'll get back to you.
Okay.
It's gone.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much, Officer Mike. Altadena Cherry Station, Captain Stuckey. Okay, Lieutenant Octave.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the council. Lieutenant Octave, the Detective Bureau Lieutenant, under the direction of Captain Stuckey, over at Altadena Station. Also have Lieutenant Yolanda Clay, our operations lieutenant, in the audience. I'm going to be very, very brief. I am pleased to announce that we've had a pretty substantial decrease in crime for the month of January 2017. Our overall crimes, serious crimes, which we refer to as Part 1 Crimes, they dropped from 64 to 53. Specifically, our residential burglaries, we dropped from 16 to 10. And lastly, our GTA, as otherwise known as our Grand Theft Autos, also decreased from 6 to 4. And I directly, I credit that directly to our detectives, our personnel at the station, along with the, the help from the community, because, as everyone knows, we cannot do this alone. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Lieutenant.
I noticed that in Census Track 4601, there was quite an uptick in larceny. Can you talk to that at all?
Yes. The uptick in larcenies in 4601, that was mainly due to an increase in thefts, and partially, it's due to theft of unlocked vehicle. So, as always, I'd like to, as a reminder, please do not place belongings on the seat. Please remember to lock your doors, and be very, very, very vigilant of your... Please remember to lock your doors, and be very, very, very vigilant of your surroundings. And we'll continue to beat that drum every time we come up here and speak. Any further questions?
Yes, sir.
I applaud you for the great work you guys are doing.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, 16 to 10, in terms of the residential burglaries, is there a trend in terms of the 10 residential burglaries, such as times, such as were people home, things of that nature? Maybe you can speak to that?
Yes, sir. That's a great question. No real trends in terms of that. They do fluctuate from time to time. We have some tactics that I can't reveal that we do as, like a deterrent. So, I think that kind of directly influences it, but there is no specific time or pattern. But when we do recognize a pattern, we saturate the area, and we also, our detectives have different contingencies that we use to mitigate these issues.
Okay.
And 4603.02, can you speak a little bit about the marijuana? The one down there?
Can you be more specific?
Well, I mean, when you put marijuana, is it because you saw somebody walking down the street smoking, or what is the issue around the marijuana?
Yes, I think you're referring to the arrest of a person with marijuana.
Okay. So, that's what that's referring to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I have a couple more, and that will be Councilmember Sutherland. And then, it'll be Councilmember Nestor.
My question actually follows along with John, because we're talking, we're looking at, you know, larceny, grand theft, whatever goes in that particular box.
Yes.
And I was doing comparison with, you know, this year versus last year. We had an uptick, same as you did in your area. And when I look at the total numbers this year versus January last year, this year was 25 versus 13, so that's double versus last year. Is there anything that is different that...
There are no trends or patterns, but I can tell you, included in that category are larceny shoplifting, and they do get tracked the same as all other larcenies. But there are no trends or patterns that we have been able to identify to, which basically has led to that.
That's like twice as much as last year, that's why I was wondering.
Right. No trends or patterns.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation. I had a question, actually wouldn't be included in the report. It was on Valentine's Day, February 14th. I noticed on the corner of Figaro and Lincoln, at the All-Star Liquor, there was, I saw at one point, at least six patrol vehicles. So, I was wondering what happened there, or what the situation was, because I haven't heard anything from that, about that.
We got a call on that, and I wasn't sure if that was our officers or another incident, but I can research that again and come back with a, give you an explanation.
Okay, thank you.
But I wasn't aware of any incident that occurred.
Yeah, I just asked because, well, it was Valentine's Day, so I remembered, but I noticed there was like at least six or seven, which I think is a lot, so it had to be something.
Yes, sir. And there's no other questions. Lastly, I would like to, on...
Go ahead, Councilmember Lanson.
Question per se, I just wanted to thank, I believe it's Lieutenant Dan Page. There's been a lot of, I'll call it fear mongering on social media around the sheriff's relation to immigration enforcement, and Lieutenant Page got on and clarified that the sheriffs did not have a role, and that there weren't any proposed things going on like was being said on social media. And so, I just wanted to thank him for being proactive on that. I thought it was really important, and he was very clear, and he was great.
Thank you very much. And just for clarification, Dan Page is a deputy, and he is in charge of our search and rescue team. He does an outstanding job, so thank you for that.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you so much. I know you want to bring up...
I just wanted to say, just on behalf of Captain Stuckey and the entire Sheriff Department, our condolences do go out to the family of the officer that lost his life in the line of duty at Whittier, and we just want to give our condolences. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone for cert? Okay. Yes?
Could I sort of suggest that we get in touch with them? They haven't been here for many months now, and perhaps we, perhaps they just don't need to come anymore, or maybe they can be encouraged to send somebody, which would be great.
Thank you. Noted. LA County Fire?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the town council. My name is Bob Haskell, and again, I'm filling in for Chief Gregory Heisel. For the month of January 2017, we had a total of two structure fires totaling nine property losses of $6,000. We had a total of 199 emergency medical calls. We had a total of 117 good intent calls and 15 false alarms. And going down and dissecting our EMS calls, I'll note that we had 12 abdominal pains, 14 altered level of consciousness, six possible strokes, five cardiac arrests, 11 chest pain, 11 flu symptoms, and 28 traumas. And the rest, that would total, 199, were basically miscellaneous, you know, weak, dizzy-type calls. And other than that, I can tell you, and it came to mind because on your agenda, I see that you had Moda's Mexican Restaurant on there. Just last Saturday, the 18th, early in the morning, we had a kitchen fire over there. Small kitchen fire, and it started behind the stove, most likely started with a natural gas leak of some sort. So, we pulled the stove out and got back into the drywall back there. It was a small fire relatively, but we called the gas company and we called the Health Department before they would reopen. So, just a matter of fact. And also, along with the CHP and LA County Sheriff, on behalf of our Fire Chief, Daryl Osby, and the entire LA County Fire Department, we also want to wish condolences in our unity with the police officer in Whittier and the entire Whittier Fire Department. Tragic loss, and it's a time for us to stick together. Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Will you be coming next week, next month, or will it be the Gregory Heisel?
I'm not sure. This happens when he has several meetings to go to at the same time.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. If it is possible, we'd like to know so that we can have it on the agenda.
Okay. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Special presentation, the bikeway improvement. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Marcusson.
Okay, thank you. As most of you know, LA County has been, for quite some time now, undergoing a project or installing a project for bike lanes. And so, there are some new bike lanes that will be coming into Altadena on Altadena Drive and Washington Boulevard. And so, Shole Ansari is here from the LA County Department of Public Works Program Development Division. She's going to show where all the changes will be. They've worked quite long on this and actually amended the plan to a certain extent based on, there's a tricky part at Altadena Drive and Washington Boulevard, and then also goes along Washington Boulevard. It originally was going to go to Allen. So, there were some, there was some conversation about how you transfer from Pasadena to Altadena to Pasadena, from two lanes to the newly revised lanes to back to two lanes. So, they have addressed that. But you will see in the maps how that's all going to affect Altadena Drive north of New York and south down to Washington, and then Washington Boulevard. So, Shole, you can... Somebody get the lights? Lights are on the other side. Oh, he's going to get them.
Hello, my name is Shole Ansari, and I'm with the LA County Department of Public Works, and we're going to present this Altadena Drive and Washington Boulevard Bikeway Improvements project. As you see, that's the location of the project. Then, could you go to the next one? This is the vicinity map that shows where the location of the project is, which is on Altadena Drive, from Washington Boulevard to all the Close Canyon Road, and from Washington all the way to, if you go to the next one, then... So, the project location is on Incorporated Community of Altadena, and a portion of it is in City of Pasadena jurisdiction. The limit is from Washington Boulevard, is on Washington Boulevard, is from 100 feet west of Belford Avenue to 100 feet east of Altadena Drive. And on Altadena Drive is 150 feet north of intersection of Canyon Close Road to Washington Boulevard. And the scope of work consisted of resurfacing and re-stripping, reconstruction of damaged curb and gutter, construction of new, and reconstruction of existing curb ramp. And we modified the curb ramp to a standard, which is ADA curb ramps. And we are installing the bike lanes on both Altadena and Washington, and lane conversion to accommodate the bike lane. Right now, we are up to almost between 90% to 100% of design plans. The project design concept has been approved by City of Pasadena and LA County, and the construction is going to start in summer 2018. This shows the, on top is the existing location of Altadena Drive, that two lane on each side, and we have a parkway or parking lane on the both side. And then, the proposed shows the bike lane and the bike buffer, one lane on each side, and we're going to keep the parking lane also. And this is on Altadena Drive. This is the existing condition of one portion of Altadena Drive, and that would be the proposed, which it shows that we're going to keep the bike lane. We're going to keep the parking lane, and then it's going to be a bike lane and bike buffer to kind of separate the bicyclists from the vehicle and on both sides of the road. And this is, again, shows the Washington Boulevard, that again, there are two lane on each side and parking lane, and then the proposed shows one lane on each side, parking lane and bike lane and bike buffer. And again, this is the before and after. So, if you have any questions or written comments, I'm here, and Dan is here also, the traffic engineers for the project.
Yeah, just a moment, let's all settle down, settle in first. Okay. Councilmembers, any...
I just wanted to know, with the bike lane included, any type of motor bike? There are bikes that have motors on them? Or would that still be considered like a motor vehicle, the way the motorcycles are riding right now?
It's only for the bicyclists? I'm not sure if it's for motorcycles. Are you referring to...
Our motorbikes. There are bikes now that have motors on them. Bicycles, yeah.
Hi, my name is Daniel Quintana. I'm a traffic engineer. I'm with Shole, and I'm here to assist with any technical questions. As far as motorcycle vehicles in the bike lane, I know that there is requirements in the vehicle code, in the California vehicle code, and then, as far as county code also, that don't allow motorcycle bicycles or vehicles. And this is a question that is not very clear, because there's so many type of now, motorized type of, like bikes or skateboards and so other, or so many others, that I think is kind of a question that it's somewhat difficult to answer, you know, because it comes down also to enforcement. What can be enforced, one can be ticketed, and so on. So, honestly, I don't have, I don't have a good answer, but it's basically whatever the law will allow. And at this time, I don't think there's anything clear as to what, you know, what type of vehicles that are motorized would be allowed in the bike lane.
I was just wondering, because, you know, they have this kind of a motorized, a motorized, I don't know if you call it a hover, hover, you had one. He came right in here with one of those, you know, a person stands on it, and you just kind of go.
I understand.
Would that be in the bike lane? Or, I mean...
There, as far as I understand, motorized vehicles are not allowed in the bike lane.
Are not in the bike lane, okay.
Councilwoman Marcusson.
Hi, yeah, as you know, this is in my census tract. When you showed the map that comes down Altadena Drive and then goes on to Washington, that's the bike lane, is that correct? That the bike lane comes down Altadena Drive to Washington Boulevard and goes west, right? So, when you're saying that the project covers 100 feet east of Washington Boulevard, that's really going to be the, like, the project part of it, right? The construction part of making it better, right?
The resurfacing.
Right, resurfacing, okay.
The condition of the road is very bad.
Okay.
So, that's a transition also.
Okay, so, and that's in Passi, that's in, that's physically in Altadena, right? Okay. So, then on the other end of it, is it the same way, it does the, it does your striping end at Belford, but then goes another 100? I'm confused about the other end. It says, it says that it ends 100 feet west of Belford.
Yeah. And let me answer that. The resurfacing improvement end at the county boundary, but we're also ending the bike lane in the lane reconfiguration at the county boundary. The issues there were that the intersection of Washington and Allen Avenue showed, when the calculations were made, showed that there would be an impact to the level of service if we changed the configuration of the lanes at the intersection.
And it's Pasadena?
And it's in Pasadena, right? So, they reviewed our analysis, and basically, they did not want to make any adjustments to their department.
Okay, okay. So, then at the, yes, you're going to, so you will do the surfacing up to the county line, which goes 100 feet west of Belford, right?
Correct.
And your striping will end at that point as well?
Right. So, the, so the transition on one direction is not too difficult, basically, to go from one lane to two lanes, because it just opens up. Of course, the bike lane would end at that intersection, but on the eastbound direction, we would have to do a lane drop. So, you have a number of, a few hundred feet where vehicles have to merge over before you can start the bike lane. So, there'll be a drop lane.
Okay. Okay, so the re-striping then will go county line to county line? No, it'll go county line to Altadena Drive?
To Altadena Drive, yes.
Okay. I'm just wanting to make sure, because, and we talked about Webster School, is there? I think you went and talked to them, did you? Did somebody go and talk to Webster?
Can you get on the mic, please?
Yes, we already had many discussions with them, and they were concerned about the traffic impact during the drop-off and... traffic impact during the drop off and pickup. So the way we, again, we revised the geometric design, and on the north side of Washington Boulevard, we kind of increased the width of the bike lane and bike buffer to accommodate that. And we already had discussion with them.
Okay, I just wanted to have everybody understand that they have taken the time to talk to, to talk to Webster about this, which was my concern. And then I would just personally like to understand, I didn't see in your presentation, I don't think, a place where, where it actually showed how you're transitioning.
Yeah, the key mustn't go to the level of detail to show that where lanes drop and stuff and so on. But yeah, like I described for Washington, on Altadena Drive, we are doing also a drop lane to, from Washington heading north, you go down to a one lane. And I know that there's a portion north of New York where it goes back to two, and then eventually at...
No, you mean, you mean Altadena Drive, right?
Oh, not Altadena Drive, yeah, I was referring to Altadena Drive.
Okay, right. So, right, so when, so it's already, it has a bit of a road diet from, from Washington to New York Drive. There are left-hand turn lanes, there's a whole bunch of other stuff.
Correct.
And then it goes down to one lane on New York Drive.
Right.
And then it goes back, I'm sorry, now I'm saying it wrong, on Altadena Drive. And then it goes back up to two lanes, a bit further north. So that part will be jigga-jogged, is that right?
Well, we're going to make it consistent, detail to show that where lanes drop and stuff and so on. But yeah, like I described for Washington, on Altadena Drive, we are doing also a drop lane to, from Washington heading north, you go down to a one lane. And I know that there's a portion north of New York where it goes back to two, and then eventually at...
No, you mean, you mean Altadena Drive, right?
Oh, not Altadena Drive, yeah, I was referring to Altadena Drive.
Okay, right. So, right, so when, so it's already, it has a bit of a road diet from, from Washington to New York Drive. There are left-hand turn lanes, there's a whole bunch of other stuff.
Correct.
And then it goes down to one lane on New York Drive.
Right.
And then it goes back, I'm sorry, now I'm saying it wrong, on Altadena Drive. And then it goes back up to two lanes, a bit further north. So that part will be jigga-jogged, is that right?
Well, we're going to make it consistent, pretty much starting at Washington, we're going to have a lane drop, and then it carries all as one lane all the way to the end of the project at the north end.
Okay, and I, okay. And I think I told you that on Altadena Drive between Washington and New York, in an email, that you need to kind of look at that, because it's already got some, it's not a regular two-lane road. So, and it drops a lane to get to one lane at New York, I mean, at, yeah, at New York.
Yeah, and this situation, we're going to make it consistent, as one lane heading all the way to the north end.
Oh, I see, okay, all right, okay.
So one lane in each direction.
If you guys wouldn't mind, and I don't want to hold up everybody, because it's in, we've got a question, so we've got to answer. But if, when you get sort of a diagram of how you transition from Pasadena to Altadena to Pasadena, that would be very helpful.
Okay, we could forward that.
Okay, all right, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember White?
Yes, one question. My, the residents in my census tract are very concerned about the section of Altadena Drive north of where the bike lane ends. There's a section that curves in Altadena Drive, transitions westbound, and through that curving section, it's very narrow. People's front yards are pushed out onto the roadway, and there's no easement for hikers or pedestrians of any sort, let alone cyclists. Are there any future plans to address that area?
I haven't heard at this time, but where is the exact location? Is it north of Close Canyon Road?
Yes.
Okay. Right now, we don't have any project unless, you know, are you, have you heard about any projects?
We're not aware of any projects on that segment, but we could bring that, your concerns and your inquiries to, you know, our staff and try to probably provide you maybe a future, any future plans that we may have, or any previous concerns that have been expressed and how we are addressing that.
If you could provide me with some contact information, I'd like to pursue this further. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember De La Tore?
Thank you, Cory. Thank you for your presentation. Actually, just going off of Councilmember White, I do have issues in my census tract as well, so if I can get your contact information. But my question is regarding during the planning phase, was a more protected bike lane proposed? And if so, why aren't the, why isn't it being implemented? And by protected, I mean something like along the streets of Rosemead, in like Rosemead City?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't consider a separated bike lane in this situation. I think that it would, it would impact, of course, of course, the cost, because to do something like that, you know, it's, it's sort of like a race separation between the bike lane and the, through traffic. It's something that definitely wasn't considered here. We felt that painted buffer will provide that safe separation, and it's typically about three or four foot wide, provides that separation, you know, for safety between the bicycles and the vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marcusson, follow up?
Yeah, if I could just say, and I know a lot of the folks in the, in the audience have know this and everything, this project has been ongoing for quite some time. And there was an entire develop, I mean, entire, well, when you were developing what, what roads were going to be affected and, and all of that, a lot of that has been implemented already in Altadena. So this is just one piece of a project that was approved a couple of years ago, wasn't it? And for the whole county, right?
Yes, it was approved a few years ago, and the reason that it's taking this long because we have to, we have the federal fund, this is highway safety improvement funds that we receive. And then we have to comply with all these federal guidelines. Right now, the environmental document is with Caltrans for review and approval, and that's why it's taking a little bit longer, it's environmental. So as soon as they approve it, then we can, you know, we can advertise and award.
I think, I think there's a website, is there not, where, where all of the bike lane maps are and things like that? And I'm wondering if, maybe Shole, you can email it to me, and I can email it to the, to the council.
For the, for the locations that in LA County shows all the proposed bike lane, bike road, and, yes, we have a map that we, it's part of Bike Way Master Plan.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay.
Councilmember Cooper?
After listening to that question, I guess my question is a moot point. So it's a done deal, basically. I was really going to ask the impetus for the project, and you just told me that several years ago, and your communication to the community about the project, and you got the feedback from the project. Just affirmation, I guess, is all I'm asking. Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you so much. I have one person from the audience, since it's one, and this is a special presentation, I'll allow that.
Yeah, sorry.
Could you stand up and speak up?
Your name and...
I'm new to the community, but I had a question, a follow-up question, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Del Torre.
Del Torre, yeah, about upgraded bike lanes and separation. The current design of the bike lanes, would it be available to be future, in the future, in the future time, upgraded to a separated bike lane, the way it's designed, the way you guys have designed it?
And yes, there's an opportunity because of the painted buffer. It's typically a matter of coming back and doing a more permanent improvement on that.
Yeah.
Like a, exactly. Typically, what, other things that we consider though, in those cases are, you know, number of driveways that, that are accessing the road, and those breaks that you have to make in the median, or accessibility of the, for parking. Say, say, somebody wants, needs to get off, you know, ADA access and so on, to get into the curb.
But there is that opportunity for forward, forward advance, like, it's not like you were saying groundwork or something that couldn't be approved on later.
Correct. I mean, and this is a more cost-effective treatment, I mean, to try it out. And in many situations I've seen where it can provide the opportunity to later on, make it a more permanent treatment.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate the diligence and the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, Land Use Committee, Councilmember Marcusson?
Okay.
You're all in charge, the next couple minutes.
Okay, okay. Okay, so the Land Use Committee met two weeks ago, and you will see on the agenda that there are two items that we voted on that we will move forward with. Before I, before we move to those items, I just wanted to real quickly talk to you about the, the new Aldi building that we were instrumental in working with the county on. I just wanted to give an update on that. Yes, they will be opening probably early May, early April. We'll get more information on that. But you may see that there are the big, sort of, there are square, sort of frames on the actual wall. Those frames are going to be filled with posters of vegetables and a headless girl on a bike, she's not really headless, but they cut her head off, you'll see, with some flowers, flowers and things, you'll see when they go up, if that still goes up. But I did want to tell everybody that one of the things that we've been trying to work with them is, is making that side of the building more interesting. The glass windows, as we all know, are, with this lease, not going to look into the building, because they're at the back of the building, they would look into, you know, storage rooms and things like that. So there, there was a lot of discussion about, they're putting up drywall, and everybody's upset because there's drywall. What's going to happen in the front of those windows is that they are, the historical society, Altadena Historical Society, has provided a number of photos, historic photos from Altadena, that they are, that Aldi is at their expense, is blowing up, and will be putting in those windows, glass windows, so that what we will see is not the drywall, we won't see the, you know, anything ugly there. I saw a discussion about that somebody thought they're going to be painting, somebody's going to paint murals on there, that's not the case. But I, I just wanted to say that they have been extremely gracious to be working with us to see how we could get those pictures up, so that it's more, it's more tuned to Altadena. So, and I, I will, when they go up, I'll encourage everybody to go read the captions, because I learned a lot from the captions, and it'll, it explains what each one of the windows is. So I just wanted to give an update. Now that, those would have been up, except it's been raining like crazy. Okay, so we have two items that we voted on, and I will, we voted to recommend approval for both of these inland use. And I will turn, I guess, John, over to you for, oh, never mind, stop, okay. So there, one item that we tabled, my apologies, we had one item that we reviewed in the meeting that was the Altadena Marketplace, and we, that one is not going to hearing, it's not even scheduled for hearing, but expected not to be scheduled for hearing until May anyway. And we wanted to work some more on it, get some more information on it. So we tabled that to the March meeting. Then we have, we had multiple AT&T CP requests for installation of antennas, and Pat, I'll let you move forward with that.
Okay. The first item is the request from AT&T to install 47 small cells throughout Altadena. We've got a very, very brief presentation, because we do have a couple of people here on the council that were not part of land use. While they've received a lot of information on the project, it would be helpful, I think, for them to also hear just a little bit about the project. And then I'll add some more information, and we'll go for questions.
Mr. Chairman, town council members, good evening. My name is Dan Rovetto, and I'm the Director of External Affairs for AT&T. And on behalf of AT&T, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to return to your council in response to the first two meetings that we presented to your Land Use Committee. We've provided a very brief overview of our project to improve connectivity for the residents of Altadena. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Kim Allen, to walk you through the presentation briefly.
Okay. Good evening, council members, and thank you so much for the opportunity to talk to you. I'm going to keep this very brief, but I know we have a couple, couple of folks that weren't in those other presentations. My name is Kimberly Allen, I'm with the Wireless Policy Group here on behalf of AT&T. We also have with us the entire AT&T team that is developing this small cell network for any questions that you might have. We want to really begin by saying that we do appreciate very much the work of the Land Use Committee here in not only analyzing our project, but in going out into your community to talk about the project and to collect feedback. We were very gratified to find such overwhelming support for the project. Sam actually wanted me to note that on your agenda, you described the project as a distributed antenna system, or DAS. Actually, what we're proposing as a small cell network is, is much, much smaller than DAS, and so it has a smaller visual impact. So with that, I think we're waiting for the picture to come up, a picture's worth a thousand words. So we want to show you exactly what a small cell is and what it looks like. We are proposing this to improve coverage and capacity throughout Altadena in the commercial and residential areas and arterials and roadways. You'll love it when it comes up. So we have proposed several design types. One is an existing or replacement utility pole. This, this essentially, what you're looking at here is, is, is all that goes on the pole. The larger piece here is a small cell antenna that is mounted to existing utility poles or light standards. And then we're also proposing two radios seated on this chair, two small boxes, that, that will attach to existing utility poles in the Altadena area. Oh, good, we've got some pictures here. So what we're proposing are existing or replacement utility poles, 36 of those. So that's something that is already present in your community, those poles. We may have to replace some for structural reasons. We're also going to replace eight light poles, and, but again, in places where there, there already is that, that infrastructure. And then we're proposing three new wood poles as well. And those are in areas where we, the County of Los Angeles will not permit us to attach to the poles that they own. So we need to put a new pole in, and we've tried to choose the locations that are the least visually impactful. So, let's see, we do have technical difficulties tonight.
Want to know the AT&T network?
Uh, no comment. However, one of the things we do want, if you've, if you've looked at the materials, one of the things we really do want to emphasize is that we've been working very hard to, to trim down the visual impact as much as possible. This is an enormous difference from, from the traditional cell towers that you're used to seeing. And then, oh, very good. And then we also have been working, all right, Cory, can you get us to, I think it's... There we go. Go back, go back one, Cory. So this is what this looks like on the pole. There's a few significant differences that we do want to, want to point out to you. One is that the antennas will be painted to match the color of the pole to further minimize the, the visual impact, as will the radios. You see, there are basically three components. There's a fiber box with a cutoff switch, there's the antenna, and the two radios are mounted just, just below there. Yeah, I'm getting to that. If we, also, initially, when we started this project, we didn't know if we could get flat rate power from Southern California Edison. So we've been negotiating with them to get power on the pole, rather than to have to set that meter pedestal next to each one of these poles. We have been successful at that, working with the County of Los Angeles Regional Planning Department. And so that, while we showed that on the material we submitted, there will be no meter pedestals on the ground. There's nothing that touches the ground for this installation. So as I said, we're proposing 47 of these in various locations in Altadena. We have, can we get to the map? So the, the red dots are the existing wood poles that we're going to be going on. The, the yellow dots would be the new AT&T wood poles, and then the blue dots represent where we'd be replacing streetlights. Can you go to the photo sims and just run through the three types? Okay, so this is the existing utility pole attachment. And we have in the lower left corner before, and then we have after with equipment painted to match, and also disregard the meter pedestal. So that's one design type. The second one, we have our replacement light poles, and this is a design that's approved by Southern California Edison that owns these poles. And in this, there's no, all of the conduit and the wiring is cont... And in this, there's no, all of the conduit and the wiring is contained within the pole itself and you have the, the, the unit on the top. So that's the look there. And then for the new poles we're, we're proposing, as you can see, it's the kind of a canister antenna on the top with, looking very much like that. And radios mounted further down and again, disregard the meter pedestal. So this is being proposed in the Altadena community because there are coverage gaps and coverage problems that we heard about at the last land use committee meeting. But there are also lots more users. We've had a 250,000 percent increase in demand for data since the advent of the smartphone. And this is the, our solution to bring capacity and coverage to places, to, to the residences where people are using all of these devices and need to be connected, both because of, you know, work, play, but also public safety. Because more and more people are relying exclusively on their cell phones and getting rid of their landlines. So with that, we are here as a team to entertain questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. And I'd like to turn it over to the, yeah, council members for questions.
Can I give a little, I'd like to give a little information first and then the council can ask any additional questions. One of the, one of the questions that came up at the last meeting had to do with the, what kind of noise would be involved. We know that it's not going to be noisy like the cell towers because all that equipment is not sitting around the, the bottom of the, well, it's not a tower, but sitting, sitting down below. If I can, I'd like to read what AT&amp;T gave us as far as, this is the information about what that, what that little, that little thing will make. And it is that the only, it's got a little fan in it, I think, correct? Little fan, that only activates if the temperature is over 80 degrees. So any, any quote unquote noise that would occur would be only over 80 degrees. The only, our, the only part of the equipment that creates a noise at each location is the fan inside the eight inch radios, something similar to the fan inside a laptop. Any noise from this fan is only heard if you're within seven feet directly in front of it. The noise would be 30, 40 decibels, which would be comparable to quiet nighttime noise lower than the wind blowing. As you get further past the seven foot distance, the noise level goes even lower. So there's very little noise impact if you add the fact that the radio is 25 feet above ground and even lower if you're indoors. That's the information that we received from AT&amp;T.
Well, and we did want to, want to note that we reached out to the residents that, that expressed concern about noise. Sam did. And sat down to answer, answered their questions and to make sure that, that they had accurate information on this as well. Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Haldy?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your presentation. I wasn't at the land use meeting, so excuse me if my questions are repetitive, if some that are already answered or asked. That big unit is going to go, and I don't know what it's called, what is it called?
That's the antenna.
Okay, the antenna. That's going to go on each particular pole?
Yes.
So for every pole that the, that AT&amp;T is putting the, the additional boxes or the smaller boxes, that antenna goes up there, right?
Right. It's, it's, it's that antenna in two boxes.
And it doesn't matter, I, I assume the poles are the same height. The reason I'm saying this is because I'm very concerned because one of the poles is adjacent to my driveway. Soon as I walk out the door, I see that pole right there. And when I walk out the door in the evening before the light comes on, the light, the streetlight, I hear that streetlight buzz, you know, that buzz, the buzzing sound. So when, the first thing I thought about was what was the noise going to be? Was it commensurate to that street, that, that streetlight noise? And I, exactly, that's what I was told, yeah. So I was concerned about that. But from an aesthetic standpoint, I, I'm just trying to picture that on each pole. It seems like it's, it's pretty exorbitant, pretty big.
Well, one of the things that you should, that we should notice, that they will be painted to match the pole. So visually, you're not going to get, you know, this, this big gray thing sitting on, on a utility pole. And then the other, the other point I would make is that we're really trying to walk away from, or move away from the, having to do so many new towers. And so in networking these, we bring the signal closer to the user at their homes, which is where they, they need to be. And we can make the cell tower network more robust as well. Because these units will take users off of the existing macro tower network. And so that will operate more efficiently as well. Because you can only have so many users on a, on a cell tower before you start to get, you know, the video won't load and, you know, the jaggy pictures on your phone and, and all of the things that tell you that your data's slowing down.
I've had those problems and that, you know, it's a benefit, it's a cost benefit thing. I'm doing the weighing up, so. But one additional thing, I, I heard what Pat said and we, and we were concerned and she gave good information on, on the sound. Will there be like a humming noise or a whisper or what, what is it?
Yeah. And, and there's, in that little radio unit, just the little tiny eight inch box there, there is a small fan that will operate when temperatures exceed 80, 80 degrees.
So in the summertime, the temperatures probably will be beyond 80 degrees?
Right.
So it would be, the fan will be on all the time?
So there's, there's a small, right. But it, but the fan is, when we, when we measured the sound from the fan, we measured it at seven feet from, from where that is, directly seven feet in front of that. And we got noise measurements that way. So if you were standing seven feet in front of it, you know, on the same level, that's where you would get the sound of during, of, it is suburban nighttime quiet at the, at the high end and rural nighttime quiet at the low end, in terms of, you know, what the, what the sound levels are. So, and then as sound, as you move away from the unit, because it's up 25 feet in the air away from you, that, that sound falls off even more from that, from that height. So we're, we're confident that this is something that's, that's not going to be disturbing your neighborhood.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Musson?
So I have in my home a, a little repeater that repeats the signal from my, my wireless router. It doesn't actually increase the amount of bandwidth in my house, of course, it just increased the signal. Is that, is this similar to that or does it actually increase bandwidth?
I'm going to turn over to Sam Cha here to answer the technical question.
It has increased bandwidth.
Thank you.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. My question was regarding, I'm not sure which presentation it was that you guys had, but you guys mentioned there was a possibility that there may or may not be like actual construction or like small construction and digging the, whatever you may need to do. Is there an update on that or how many are going to be affected or which ones?
Sure. And I'll let, I'll let Sam address the fiber, I think he's asking about the fiber component.
We have a map that shows an overall view of which nodes, which locations will require trenching to capture the fi, the power or, and/or the fiber to the specific location in the, in the poles. They vary from 10 feet to 500 feet for power and less than 500 feet for fiber. And it's not in all locations. Three quarters of, about 75% of the locations will require trenching for power. And that's the trade off you get for removing the power pedestal to bring direct power source to the, to the location. And if I would, I can't remember, I think it's a third that will require fiber trenching to the location.
Okay. Councilmember Robertson?
And so at the upper end of those trenches that need digging, you said 500 feet at the longest run. How long would a 500 foot long run take to trench and lay the fiber and cover it back up as though you were never there? Are we talking a couple of days or a week?
Depending on the scope of work, it could take a couple of days, I believe. And Walter's showing over there, but I believe here in Altadena, instead of trenching for the entire length of the work, we can bore and disturb less of the ground by doing that. And that would decrease the timelines too. But it really varies depending on the location. It could be a couple of days depending on the, the extent of, of that underground work. But everything would be restored as part of the job.
Okay. Then I do have more. Councilmember White?
Yes. Clarification on the, the fan temperature. It was stated it comes on at 80 degrees. That's not ambient temperature, that's 80 degrees of the working unit.
Internal temperature of the unit.
The internal unit. So essentially, it's going to be on all the time.
In winter months, probably, very less, much less.
But that's, the way a fan works on a computer is it happens, it, it functions according to the temperature of the processor itself.
Right.
And that's how that's going to work?
The internal temperature.
Okay.
Yes.
So it has nothing to do with ambient temperature?
No.
Thank you. I didn't know that.
Okay. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. This is, the questions I have are primarily for review, because I know you've stated this before. But just, the first question has to do with, in, in your speech, I forget, I'm sorry, I'm pointing, I forgot your name. You mentioned, you mentioned human safety, specific to the ubiquitiveness of the use of cell phones. And so I'm just wondering what, the health of the, the community, you mentioned that. What, what, what additional information can you share with this, since there are more cellphone use and there are pluses and minuses out there about the, the health effect of that? And so what about any information that you, you can share in terms of the, the cell towers or the units that you're implementing?
Sure. And I can, I can address some of those concerns. These units are designed to operate within the FCC limits for, for emissions. And they have, they will, their output is really a fraction of the maximum limit of, of the FCC. So a very, very small amount of output, you know, comparable to your router, but also 25 feet up in the air as well. And so, you know, we are fully compliant with the FCC standards and, you know, will certainly, certainly demonstrate that. We have letters from our engineers that are in the record with the county that certify that we will comply with those, with, with those limits at all times. So in terms of that safety, the other component of safety is that law enforcement often uses cell phones in the course of their work when they are out in the field to communicate. So a robust and reliable cellphone network is something that, that is a, a feature that promotes safety in your community. And again, and Corey, do we have the slide on, on the number of folks that are going with just a landline? Yeah.
Well, and we have a lot of areas that you can't get 911.
Exactly. Exactly. That, that was going to be the, the point I was going to make is that it, it's well over 50% of, of homes in, in California do not have a landline anymore. And of, you know, the ones that still have a landline, most people don't use it for anything. It's there for the, you know, the, the security alarm or, or something like that. So they are relying on their cell phones to place 911 calls. And so we want to make sure that that network is seamless when those calls come in.
Two quick, two, two other questions. In terms of the, the history of this particular unit and the maintenance issues with that, where, where do you stand in terms of how frequent does that little motor have to be maintained?
Well, generally, these are, these units don't need maintenance. A cell, you know, a cell tower generally has once a month maintenance that, that it undergoes. These units are linked back by fiber and they basically tell us if they're not operating properly. So, Sam, maybe we can, you can elaborate on that a little bit.
Each, each installation, each radio unit and antenna will be equipped with alarms in case of any deficiencies of malfunction. So once those alarms are triggered, that will engage our operations team to come out to the field and check for those malfunctions.
And I guess my question's a little simpler than that. Simply based on the history of you having the particular unit installed in other areas, what has been the maintenance issue, report?
Once or twice a year.
Once a, once or twice a year. Okay. And I guess, I guess the final question has to do with the, based on the, the, the common topology that you're recommending for the Altadena area, how common is that to other areas that you, that you, that you service? For example, Beverly Hills, other areas, do you, do you implement the same topology or do you go to a different one? And if so, which one do you use and why?
Not quite sure I understand the question.
Interesting.
I think what, what you're asking, council member, is, is whether we're going to be deploying this same design throughout the Southern California area, is that?
Let me make it simple. That's a lot of towers. Does that make sense?
Well, these are towers. These are attached to utility poles.
There's a lot of them. And so I'm asking, based on your, your attempt to provide service and do all the other things that you do, the 911 call facilitation. So what other, and you mentioned you could do cell towers, but you prefer to do this one. So I was asking, based on other areas that you go in with topologies, do you have the same type of implementation or do you suggest something else? And if so, why? Simple as that.
Yeah. And I think that this is the design, that I, as I understand it, this is the design that we're going to be using throughout Southern California, certainly. And Sam?
Irrespective, irresponsible of area. It doesn't matter whether it's Beverly Hills, Hollywood, Altadena.
Regardless of the area that is planned to be serviced, these locations have a very much limited service area coverage compared to a regular tower site. Regular tower site at 120 feet high could cover up to miles in a, in a radius from that tower. These, these locations at 30 feet high with small radios cover a, a much shorter radius of 1,500 feet at optimum.
And just one clarification?
So the need for multiple locations in this type of design is because you're targeting the locations more specifically than the big towers.
Thank you. Just, just one final question. So the Altadena area is the first of your topology? Okay. So we're, 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 we're the, how do you say the? I don't want to use that phrase, but we're kind of first.
You have installed anywhere else in Southern California?
This technology, this technology is, is spreading out throughout all Southern California. We have several projects in several areas. Altadena is, is one of the first that have rolled out.
That's what I was asking.
Along with downtown LA. Other carriers have already, some installations, Verizon, I believe, have.
Right. Verizon has them here in Altadena already.
Just one final.
But it's, this is not the first of ever, no. There's been other installations.
Okay. And so basically, and they're all in residential areas, communities, just like this, going to be?
Depending on where the coverage needs are, sure.
Okay. Okay.
No, 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 really just have one.
All right. One last question.
What's the lifespan or the, that we anticipate these lasting?
Ooh, good question. My technical folks. A long time? I don't see them leaping to the fore here. Yeah, actually, we, we will, we will, we'll follow up on this.
Well, just because technology's changing so quickly and we're just wondering how long.
Well, and, and, you know, and you're right, you know, and even with our, you know, our tower sites, we're changing radios and, and as technology moves forward and improves and hopefully gets smaller, you know, we will be keeping these, these sites up to date so that the coverage can be seamless for these, for your areas.
Thank you.
Okay. Hold on one moment. I think we really need to move forward with this, but I'll, I'll let you go on this, then I'll ask a final question. So that's the final one.
Okay. I, I did want to, we talked in land use committee about the, the pole that was on the Mount Lowe, right? And, and I wanted to ask if you'd been able to go back and look at that at all and, and if you had a new location for it?
We've made the requested changes.
Okay. So you're moving it to closer to a corner of the, of the park strip and all of that? Okay. All right. Thank you. Just want to make sure that you've been able to go back and, and do that. Okay.
Councilmember Cooper, really a final question, please.
Based on, and this is simply review, I know you've said this before, just, I just want to hear it again. Based on your, your inquiry to the community, your outreach in terms of finding out their Based on your inquiry to the community, your outreach in terms of finding out their concerns, what were two of the most... How do you say? Compelling concerns that were given to you?
Excuse me? We did the outreach.
I can answer that question.
I'm asking that, the part that they played.
They don't do outreach to the community. We do.
Okay. Based on... That's something we can take a sidebar on, yes. But based on your requirements and the requests, what concerns did you receive?
Hold on one moment. I'm going to use the chair's privilege. This CUP was brought to the Altadena Town Council, and it was sent to the Land Use Committee. The Land Use Committee is the one to vet it and do the community outreach. So your question will be... It doesn't have to be addressed by them, but the person who did the work is the one to address it. So Councilmember Sullivan, please address the question.
Mr. Chairman, could you allow them to answer that question, please?
They do not have that information. We conducted the survey.
They're going to ask you, why don't they have that information?
Okay. Do you want the answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please go ahead and address it.
Okay.
That is okay. Councilmember Sullivan will address the survey results and the survey issue.
In syrup... All right. I'm just going to read what I've written as far as the outreach that we did with the community, because I think that's what your question is. "In order to obtain community input on this request, council members from each of the affected census tracts did personal outreach. This was concentrated around the proposed sites of the small cells. The number of small cells planned in each tract vary from 2 to 14. We knocked on 775 doors, talked with over 200 residents face to face. We left 650 flyers either with the resident or at the residence if nobody was home. We received 40 responses to the flyers via email or other social media. Of these total responses, 7% did not approve, 31% had no opinion, and 62% were in favor. Of those who did not approve, reasons cited were they currently have good reception, they did not use AT&amp;T, and some had health concerns. In addition, several email responses indicated that the respondent either thought the request was for a cell tower rather than the small cell or did not understand the difference between the two." That's the outreach that we did with the community.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Cooper, are you satisfied with that information?
No, sir. And the reason I'm not, because I simply wanted to ask, based on the CUP requirements of the applicant, I'm asking simply, were they asked to do any outreach, community outreach? That's what's my question.
They came to two land use meetings, and they came to this meeting. This is their public outreach. That's what we're facilitating, their public outreach. So they've spoken to land use twice and now here. And we've taken public comment in all of those two places. We'll take it again tonight. So that's... The only thing that town... Let me just say this to you, that regional planning does not require that they do any outreach for the projects as a requirement. They are asked to come to... All of the applicants are asked to come to Town Council to allow us to do some outreach to the community. And this is their out... This is... The county considers this to be their outreach through our meetings. So they're not required to go door to door by the county at all. So they don't have the information you want, I don't think, because they didn't do it because it's not required. So FYI.
And is that your understanding of your application?
Yes. When we spoke with regional planning, when we went in to discuss our application, before we even filed our applications, they indicated that the outreach we needed to do was through the Altadena Town Council. And so we have focused on that outreach. I would add that of the folks that were at those meetings that expressed concerns, we have followed up with those individuals and have addressed the concerns that they raised.
Right.
Thank you so much. And also for just the council members, I'll just make this comment with due respect to... With respect to the council members, the process is very simple. When someone... Something requires a CUP, it comes to the Altadena Town Council, and the council sends it to the Land Use Committee. The Land Use Committee vets it. And the responsible council members for those areas impacted are the ones that does the outreach, okay? Thank you. All right. Hold on for a...
Corey, maybe one more point of clarification, just so that we're all on the same page. You heard the discussion about the FCC requirements as far as the emissions are concerned. As long as they're under the FCC limit, then we are not taking health issues into consideration for any of the cell tower projects that we talk about, or cell projects, I guess we should say now. So just to clarify.
Thank you so much.
It's against the law for us to do that.
I spoke to the FCC today, one of their representatives. And some of the requirements, especially, I think... I forget the exact verbiage. Has to do with height in the air for ad traffic controllers, the FAA requirements. So that's one of their so-called requirements that you have to register. But it does not preclude that because if you fall within so-called FCC requirements that there are no particular health issues and that kind of thing in. I am not precluded by any law to represent the community on any health issues. That's in our operating procedures, that's in the bylaws. And I can give you the specific one if you need.
Thank you so much. The county... The regional planning already knows... They know what the requirements are. And based on what was reported, this particular project is well below what is required. So we're going to move on with that fact.
Okay.
Okay. I don't have any public comment cards. Are there any on this particular item 5.1.1? Okay? So there are no comments, so I'll turn it over. I would like to entertain a motion.
Okay. In the matter of...
Oh, hold on one moment. Wait a moment, ma'am. We allowed everybody the opportunity to fill out their comment cards so that we can entertain it. We need to know who you are.
But since you don't go by that, my question is today, there are about four poles in my street, you know, the street I live in, La Corona. Why they pick the last... My house is the last one at the dead end. Why did you pick that particular pole when there are other ones right down the street? We don't use AT&amp;T, we use Sprint. But I don't know why you picked the one right in front of my house, even though I told you what happened to me in Georgia. But you picked the one in front of my house again beside the one in Georgia. So I'm wondering why you didn't pick one of the poles that I, you know, that I installed that are there on La Corona? Why, you know, you picked mine or the one in front of my house?
Okay. Thank you, ma'am, for that information. And we recommend that you speak to them after the meeting, to AT&amp;T representatives. Okay, I would like to entertain a motion.
"In the matter of project number 2016002608 and others, the proposal of AT&amp;T to install 47 small cell towers in Altadena, I propose that based on overwhelming support from the community, the request be approved with the following conditions. Number one, all equipment is to be placed on the pole, not on the ground, and painted to match the pole. Two, the project is to meet all FCC limits and guidelines for radio frequency emissions. Three, in locations where a new pole is to be installed, advance notice is to be made to all residents who will be affected due to construction, for example, digging of a trench. Proper maintenance is to be maintained according to AT&amp;T's regular schedule. And five, regarding the new pole to be installed on Maiden Lane and Mount Lowe Drive, the pole is to be located at the edge of the median and as far north as possible."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We will have...
On that... On the motion, just the discussion on the conditions.
Okay.
Just one question. Advanced notice, how much advance notice is there? Was there any discussion about advanced notice? I'm just wondering.
Well, it's really going to depend on when it's done, public works, whatever the standard is as far as, you know, obviously enough so that it...
Okay.
The neighbors are notified.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I just want to get clarification on their regular maintenance schedule. You said it should be maintained on the... What is their regular schedule? What is the regular maintenance schedule? The way you worded it in there...
Right, right, right.
What is it?
A lot depends on usage. They mention the alarms that they get, what they have to come out specially.
So their regular maintenance schedule is every six months? Annually? Monthly? Or just when those things go off? Just when they go off?
May I ask a quick question? Do you guys have a service level agreement of how quickly those are fixed when you get an alarm? That maybe we could...
There's an 800 number that will be posted at each location. If there's any issue that any resident might have in possible malfunction of the units, contact that number. The service level for getting somebody out there is within 48 hours of contacting that 800 number.
Well, now, you said earlier that you were going to get an alarm and you would know that it was broken, right?
Yes.
It's going to alarm you.
In that case, the alarm already triggers a team to immediately go, and there's no need for somebody to contact.
Okay, so if it's maybe what you're saying is if the pole is damaged or if it's something that's not alarming, right? So if it's something that you don't know about?
There's a tree branch that might be about to fall on top of it. That's something that we can address through that.
So could we put maybe 48 hours of notification of damage to the... Or something?
We also have a yearly inspection on the pole, so we physically come out once a year to inspect the pole.
Oh, then just do that, yearly. Just do that, yearly. According to AT&amp;T's...
It's both, a yearly inspection and any extra issues coming from all alarms or malfunctions.
Okay, while we're working on this, I'll give you a moment to work on that.
Regular annual... Does that make sense, Gloria?
Yeah.
Regular annual?
That's the regular, it should be stated.
Yeah, right. Regular annual inspection, so that it would read, "Proper maintenance is to be performed according to AT&amp;T's regular annual schedule." And could I just make a quick... I think when you read it, you said, "I recommend approval of", and maybe what we're going to do is say, recommend that we send a letter to regional planning. I knew that. Yeah. Regional planning to recommend approval. Recommend to... To regional planning, right. The request... I mean, you can even say, "Send a letter to regional planning recommending approval of the project with conditions."
Okay, while you're working on that language. Just a question for the reps from AT&amp;T. Will this be rolled out one time or is it like phased out?
It phases.
Phases, okay. And each one is expected to be how long to install? I'm just Philip Bostrom so that we can get this thing. So... Okay, thank you.
Even if a new pole has to be installed? On a new pole, it would take a little longer, probably?
Yeah, it's pretty quick. There's only three new poles going in.
Yeah, I heard you say that, yeah. I just wanted to be a writer.
And we already relocated one of them, so it's not...
I just don't want it to be there.
It's not near there.
Okay, good.
I'm losing... Okay, I can help. Please. Okay, the request to be...
The letter be sent to regional planning recommending...
That's where I want it. Regional planning...
No.
Recommending approval with the following conditions, okay? Okay. So the sentence reads... The end of the sentence reads, "I propose that based on overwhelming support from the community, letter be sent to regional planning recommending approval with the following conditions."
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmembers, you have heard the motion, and it's been seconded.
As approved, I mean, as amended.
As amended.
Yes.
The motion as amended.
Yes. My second stands.
Thank you. All right, so ready for a vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
Okay, so we have...
I need an abstention, please.
Okay, yes, I know that we weren't going to count you in the process. Okay, so...
One abstention, please.
Okay, so it's 14, and we have three nays, two... How many? Two nays, then one abstention, and 11 in favor. Okay.
Instead of opposed?
That's what I said.
I wasn't opposed, I didn't say anything.
Oh, okay.
Let's do hands. I'm abstaining right now.
Let's do hands.
I have it. It is two abstentions and two nays.
Oh, there you go.
And 10 in favor.
Okay.
All right, so we... This will be... A letter will be sent to the regional planning regarding this matter. All right, next one. Everybody ready? Let's get to the other one, 5.1.2. Can you speak to the mic, please? One moment, one moment.
Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And what was the question? Oh, just I was telling you, okay. Yes, this is a project that Nestor De La Torre worked on, and the Altadena Land Use Committee voted to recommend that the Altadena Town Council recommend approval. So go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Markison. So at this time, I'll invite Peter Impala up to give a brief presentation, after which I'll go over my report that I created on the matter, and then we'll go to Town Council discussion and then go from there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nestor. Good evening, my name's Peter Impala. I'm with Art Rodriguez and Associates. We're alcohol beverage consultants and zoning specialists. We do conditional use permits and ABC applications throughout the state of California. And I want to thank Nestor, first of all, and the Altadena Land Use... Town Council Land Use Committee for the work. We went to two meetings. We've gone back and forth. You've canvassed the community, and we're in agreement with the recommendations that you've made. Mota's, of course, is at 2397 North Lincoln. Very small eatery with no bar. It's got 35 seats, and they've been there for 10 years. The owner and his wife live in Altadena, very close to the location. They're involved with the community. They have another restaurant in La Cañada that they've been running for over 10 years called Magpies. It's had a Type 47 On Sale General Liquor License for all that time with no problems. They're restaurateurs, are successful at what they do, and they're very glad to be a part of the community. They also have purchased the building that they're in now, and they've invested in the land. And their home is, like I said, just a few blocks from there, within a half mile. With that being said, I think I'll just open up to questions because we're in agreement with the Land Use Committee on what they've put together and the hard work they've done to canvas and reach out to members of the community.
Okay, thank you. We turn it back over to Councilmember De La Torre.
Thank you for your presentation. So I have a report that I created on the subject. There's actually two copies in the back on the piano for anybody in the public who would like a copy. And there's two on the Town Council roaming around, so if you want to reach out. There's one right there, and the other one's somewhere over there. Okay, so the case number is RPPL 2016003075. The planner on the case is Mr. Stephen Marr. The applicant and the property owner is Adolfo and Irene Mota. There's other general information on there. There's other general information on there in terms of property size, how many seats. In terms of parking, there's five parking spots, including one disabled, that they do not share with any other property, so it's just their parking lot. The permit description, I'll read verbatim, requesting conditional use permit to allow the sale and dispensing of a full line of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption in conjunction with the continued operation of an existing one thousand seventy-three square foot restaurant, proposed hours of operation and alcohol sales between eight AM to ten PM daily. So for the project summary, again, Adolfo and Irene Mota are both the property and the business owners of Motas Mexican Restaurant. They currently reside in Altadena, California. The restaurant is a small family-run business, has been in operation for over ten years, it seats approximately thirty-five and doesn't have any outdoor seating. The CUP they're requesting is to, oh, they don't have outdoor seating and they don't plan on having outdoor seating in the future. The CUP they're requesting is to allow the sale of a full line of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption only. The reasoning for this CUP and the, 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 both types of licenses is they would like to provide their patrons with additional beverage options to have with their meals. The proposed hours of operation and sales of alcohol are eight AM to ten PM daily. As Mr. Impala stated, the Motas own another restaurant, which is similar in size and scope as this one, it's called Magpies Grill in La Cañada. And as he stated, they've had a type forty-seven license, which is a full line of liquor for over ten years now with, with no issues. So they, they are experienced and they, they know what they're doing with this regard. Alcohol will be available only to customers dining in and will not be allowed to be removed from the premises, which is to include takeout containers, beverage containers. Alcohol will not be sold to anyone under the legal drinking age. The restaurant employees will continuously monitor alcohol storage areas. The distilled spirits will not be served alone, also known as shots. And alcoholic beverages containing distilled spirits will only be served in cocktails or similar type of mixed drink. Employees will refuse to sell to patrons that appear to be intoxicated and all employees will be given proper training, proper training in these procedures as, and the owners will ensure the compliance of training by all the employees. The physical elements of the building will not be altered as a result of this application, but the applicants ensure the property be, will, will be properly maintained, secured and well lit. The applicants agree to comply with all applicable laws, regulation and rules imposed or enforced by any government entity, including but not limited to, and then I list a few stuff, but it's not all inclusive. So in terms of the California alcohol beverage control, the California ABC, there's two separate types of licenses. They're currently applying for a type forty-one, which is on sale beer and wine for a bona fide public eating place. And they, they are in the process of applying for a type forty-seven, which is more difficult. So that's why they're applying for two separate ones, because one is easier to get than the other one. And the type forty-seven is the on sale general for a bona fide public eating place, which that one would allow the distilled spirits. And both authorize the sale of the respective alcoholic beverages for consumption of on or off-site premises where sold, or on premises, I should say, distilled spirits, oh, sorry, I'm just reading, I'm reading the other part, must operate and maintain the licensed premises as a bona fide eating place, which, so they must maintain suitable kitchen facilities, must make actual and substantial sales of meals for consumption on the premises. And that definition for the ABC, they, they define as make actual and substantial sales of meals for consumption. They define that as more than fifty, more than fifty percent of your gross total sales must be of meals for consumption. Onto the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. According to their records, there have been four calls for service at the address, including one for public nuisance. They didn't give me an exact timeline of how far back that goes, that's just what they told me. And however, the sheriff's department doesn't see any reason to deny the application. To the Department of Regional Planning, I spoke with the planner on the case, Mr. Stephen Marr, about December twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen. And Mr. Marr, again, Mr. Marr, speaking for the Department of Regional Planning, saw no reason to deny the application either. And they were awaiting our decisions on the land use committee and now the Altadena Town Committee. If approved in February twenty seventeen, meetings of each respective body, Mr. Marr's timetable for a hearing date on this application is approximately April twenty seventeen. For community outreach, the community outreach I conducted, I conducted personally was of the local residents and businesses within approximately five hundred foot radius. The results are as follows. Total residences approached, a hundred seven, yes, nineteen, no, two, no opinion or concern, seventeen, not home, sixty-nine. A flyer in English and Spanish was left that all the residences informing them of the basic information of the project, the time, date and address of the February land use committee and Altadena Town Council meetings, and my personal contact information to get in touch with me if they had any further issues. The two no-voted cited an abundance of alcohol vendors in the area as a reason for their disapproval of the application. Another resident also cited increased vandalism as a reason for their disapproval of the application. One resident who approved of the application would not like the operating hours and serving hours to go beyond ten PM. In terms of community outreach done by the restaurant themselves, they had their own internal petition for their patrons to offer their support of the application. I guess it is a little biased since it's their own customers, but the results have, the results, the petition was circulated between the month of September twenty sixteen to January twenty seventeen. It garnered a hundred thirty votes, seventy-seven from Altadena, twenty-three from Pasadena and thirty from various other cities. And their addresses were confirmed by myself of their self-reported addresses that they put that were in Altadena or their other respective areas. And also, the ABC out, did their own outreach, well, I guess not really outreach, but when they applied for the original type forty-one license, they have a general rule that they mail, they directly mail some type of notice within five hundred feet of the, five hundred feet of the, the application site. And they reached a hundred forty-one residences and they received no, did not, well, no reasons to deny it. No one, no one said that they didn't want it, there you go, that's what I'm trying to say. Other information, sensitive uses, which are to include parks, schools, churches, et cetera, there are none within six hundred feet. I listed ten that I just know of, just based on the area, that are within the census tract, well, except for Johnmere High School, that's not in the census tract, but it's a prominent part of the community in that area, so I decided to list it. But they're all, well, except for the exception of one, they're all over a hundred, I mean, a thousand feet away, so I feel like there would be no impact of these, these sensitive uses. Other ABC holders within six hundred feet, one, there's All-Star Liquor located at two four two one North Lincoln Avenue, and it's a type four, type twenty-one off-sale general and the distance is a hundred twenty feet. So to the, the one no vote, when I did my community outreach, when he said there's too much, too much sales of liquor going on in that area, there is only one, but as we all know that that store does have a substantial sale, amounts of sales of alcohol, but I don't think the history involved with that store is indicative of the applicant's issues in the area, which I'll go further into in the, in my summary. Other known vendors of alcohol within the census tract, so as the ABC license holder within six hundred feet, that's an official statistic given by the ABC. The, the other known vendors, this is just my own knowledge of the area, I count three, Ponte Plante Meat Market, Super King Market and Altadena Ale and Wine House. The two, the two, the two first ones were our markets, so they sell it for off-sale. This is just, like I said, this is just me, I don't know what type they have, I would assume it's a type twenty-one, similar to All-Star Liquor, but don't quote me on it. Altadena Ale House, I know, has a on-sale premises, type forty-one, no, actually, no, sorry, not type forty-one, because type forty-one's a bona fide eating place. That's classified as a bar, I guess you would call it, it's another different type. So other known vendors of alcohol in the area, I can count three, so in total four within the census tract. So conclusion, the applicants have shown a desire to improve and remain in the community by both living and consistently maintaining a business in the city and community for over ten years. The hours of operation and serving hours of alcohol are reasonable. Previous issues with regards to the immediate area do not pertain to the applicant and are not indicative of their positive history in the community. This is proven by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department's history regarding calls of service to this address and the view that, that there's, sorry, and the view that there is no reason to deny the application. Furthermore, the Department of Regional Planning doesn't see any reason to deny the application. There are no sensitive uses within six hundred feet. I do not believe any of the other sensitive uses in the census tract listed in this report will be negatively impacted by this application. There is only one other licensed vendor of alcohol in a six hundred foot radius and that is for off-site consumption. There are three known vendors of alcohol in the census tract listed in the report, two for off-site consumption and one for onsite consumption. The immediate area and census tract, I believe, are not impacted by vendors of alcoholic beverages. The community outreach conducted by myself, the restaurant and ABC prove that the overwhelming community approval of the, prove the overwhelming community approval of the application. Considering all the factors given in this report, I recommend that the application be approved. And now I'd like to open it up.
Okay, and thank you so much for the information. I would like to open it up to the council members.
I just have one question, if, if I could.
Yes, go ahead.
Nester, you indicated about the Altadena Sheriff's Department had made a response to that location?
There's four calls for service, one for public nuisance. That's, that's all I get. Whether or not that originated from Motas is unclear, how far back that goes is also unclear, that's just calls to service to that address.
Okay, thank you.
It's in ten years.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Council member Cooper?
Thank you, council member De La Torre. Just one question, you mentioned that the ABC had sent out approximately two hundred forty-seven community concerns requests?
One hundred forty-one.
One forty-one. How many did they get back? Do you know that?
They mailed them directly to the residencies, as far as I know, none.
They didn't get any back?
They didn't get any back, positive or negative.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I don't have any, okay, council member Musson?
So, I know we're late, but I just have to say this on behalf of Motas. I grew up in, in the census tract, I've been living in the census tract actually since nineteen seventy-two and it was so bad on Lincoln when I was a kid that I wasn't allowed to go over there. The types of businesses that were there, there was a bar, there was a chop shop and there were, I think, about something like five liquor stores within a half mile. Since then, we've successfully opened two grocery stores in the area, a gym, Panda Express, et cetera, et cetera. In that time, Motas opened up. And Motas is exactly what we on the town council talk about all the time when we talk about family-owned, local-owned businesses. I eat there, my son, son introduced me to it because they have the cheapest, best nachos in Altadena. I also know, and my wife and kids all know, the family that runs the place and works the place as well. And this is exactly the type of business that we need to be supporting, not only in Altadena, but specifically on the Lincoln Business District. The Lincoln Business Corridor is one that's been plagued with all sorts of issues, including gang violence and so forth, and this is exactly kind of the opposite of that. This is a family-run business, we're, we're a family that actually takes pride in their business and, and lives in the community. And so before we take a vote, I actually just want to speak on behalf of them and the type of business that they run and the reason that they're looking for this, this CUP. I don't drink, so I have no, no dog in the fight, but the idea here is to, to be a regular type of Mexican food restaurant that has margaritas with dinner, so that those who do like to have a margarita with dinner can have that with, with dinner. It helps them to be successful and helps them to be competitive and I hope as a council that we can get behind this type of business, if we can't get behind anything else, to get behind this type of business and help them to be successful in the place where they are and have been successful for the last ten years. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right.
I have just one thing to say. I think that, that what council member Musson said is, you know, I agree with that, but I do feel that that area is kind of inundated with alcohol. And since I've been on the council, there has been, every time we get this statistics back from the Altadena station, crime station, that particular census tract has never had less than, I would say, five incidents, I said, I guess, going on there. And I just feel that, that the, the way he described it, that's the kind of businesses that we'd like to have there, but then if the, if that All-Star liquor is the issue and maybe creating a lot of, I guess, whatever's going on in the community to create the crime and all that, then I think that we should address that, you know, so that we can begin to bring the crime level and all that kind of stuff down. Because I passed by there and I passed by Motas, I was just, they're just like a few doors away from each other. And then when I passed by the liquor store, there's like ten people standing out there, inebriated or whatever they're doing, you know, with one another. And it just, it just seems to me just to add more liquor there without dealing with, you know, an issue that we know is there, it sort of almost defeats the purpose of trying to put a nice wholesome place there, you know, so. So I, that's all I'm saying, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate, I got it, I got it.
I don't drink or anything like that either, but I'm all for wholesome kind of businesses, but I think that if there is something there that's creating, you know, issues, we need to, we need to deal with it.
They're in the basket.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so, public comment? I have to, public comments, we'll give you a couple of seconds to fill out one, please.
You can actually just announce it and give us the card afterwards, yes?
Let's do that, come on to the mic, please.
Okay, yeah. Just make it, it's real, make it really quick. I, I, I agree with both of these sentiments about liquor being a problem and having people, you know, standing outside of liquor stores, causing, you know, disturbances, but I do also very much agree with Mr. Musson's point. More, you know, more civilization, more things, more traffic happening where you have a nice eating establishment and you have a lot of those in an area, I think actually increases safety because you get a lot of people, a lot of families come in there and you're less likely to get, you know, hooliganing or whatever you want to call it in those areas. I know that the areas where there's only like one, you know, established place and then there's a long stretch of sort of nothing, that tends to be the areas that have more trouble, in my experience, so just to address that point.
Thank you so much, we'd still like to get that.
The name card.
My name is Noah Smith and I live.
Yes, ma'am.
That's my neighborhood. Motas is the best place that we have, it's delicious. The people that hang out on that corner.
To the mic, please.
They're not basically drunks, they're gang bangers. They don't drink, they hang out, they cause problems. Nobody that's anybody likes to go to All-Star because of the gang bangers. You all get rid of the gang bangers, it's not the liquor, it's the gang bangers. Get rid of them, let Motas have their license. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council members, you've heard the, the.
Are we considering that to be a motion that?
No, we're gonna get an official, I entertain an official motion.
Can we just make sure that we say that we're recommending that we send a letter to regional planning for approval, because that's not what the report read?
Yeah, we, we get it.
It's in the motion.
Okay, so you've heard all this, so I would like to entertain a motion from council member De La Torre.
Thank you, Chair. So I move that a letter of, a letter be sent to regional. So, I move that a letter be sent to Regional Planning recommending approval of CUP application number RPPL 2016-003075 for Motas Mexican Restaurant located at 2397 North Lincoln Avenue, Altadena, California, 91001, to allow the sale and dispensing of a full line of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption with the following conditions. One, the hours of operation and sale be between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. daily. The applicants will ensure the property... Sorry, the applicants ensure the property will be maintained, secure, and well-lit. Alcoholic beverages will only be sold in conjunction with meals. Alcohol will only be served for onsite consumption and not be allowed to be removed from the premises for any reason. Alcohol will not be sold to those under legal drinking age. The restaurant employees will continuously monitor alcohol storage areas. Distilled spirits will not be served alone, also known as shots. Alcoholic beverages containing distilled spirits will only be served in cocktails or similar type of mixed drink. Employees will refuse to sell to patrons that appear to be intoxicated. All employees will be given proper training in these processes, and the owners will ensure the compliance of training by all employees. The applicants agree to comply with all applicable laws, regulations, and rules imposed or enforced by any government entity.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, there is a motion from councilmember Delatorre. Hold on. And it has been properly seconded by, who is the...
I'll take that second.
Okay, councilmember Musson. So, you have heard the motion and properly seconded, well, I take councilmember Musson. And now, any further discussions? Councilmember Cooper?
Just for clarification.
Yes.
You said earlier that the applicant had applied for two licenses, a forty-one and a forty-seven.
That is correct.
Which one does this motion involve?
So, with the Department of Regional Planning, when you apply for a CUP, they just count it as full line of liquor. So, full line of liquor, meaning if this is approved, they get the type forty-one, they can start selling immediately. Once they get the type forty-seven, they don't have to come back to make a new CUP. So, this is one over-encompassing CUP for both.
So, it's a forty-one and forty-seven?
Correct.
That is correct. The type forty-one and forty-seven are state liquor licenses, California Alcohol Beverage Control. This is Los Angeles County CUP.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, just for clarification, Stephen Marr told me that this is how they do it all the time.
Not a problem. I was just curious, I heard two, you know, I didn't know which one that the motion refers.
Okay, yeah, so, the CUP is for a full line of liquor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Marcusen?
I just had a quick question, Nestor and Brent. In the past, sometimes we've done, I heard that what you said, the hours were from whatever the time was until 10:00 p.m., serving eight to 10:00. We often with restaurants say, or an hour before closing, whichever is earlier, I don't know if they serve until 10:00, or they open past that, or...
It is my understanding, Mr. Impala, you can correct me, but they plan on serving and selling till 10:00 p.m. Whether or not someone stays after that, they can to finish their meal, but they're not going to continue serving food or alcohol beyond 10:00 p.m. So, they'll lock their doors and they'll let their patrons finish their meal.
So, you can walk in at 9:59.
And chug a beer.
No, no, no. You can walk in at 9:59 and still order a meal, and you can also order something with your meal, but you may be there until 11:00, finishing your meal.
Okay, so, they don't, they close their doors at 10:00, but they don't, if you're in the building before 10:00, you get to order?
If you're in the building and you order before 10:00 p.m., yes.
Okay, all right.
So, you can't be in the building at 9:30, eating your meals, and you're there past 10:00, and, oh, hey, I want another one, and order another round, or order more food. They stop serving and selling at 10:00 p.m.
They'll sell you some food, but they won't sell you any alcohol after 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
No, it's my understanding, they don't, they're not even gonna serve, they're gonna close the...
I got a special relationship.
Yeah, oh, maybe Brent has something different, but yeah. At 10:00 p.m., they stop selling and serving any type of beverage or food.
So, then, they're generally, what we talk about then is having them serve up until a certain hour, like you could even say half an hour before closing or something, so that they're not, people are not chugging drinks with their meal at 9:59, right? It's, this is what we've done in the past, I'm just saying. I'll leave it up.
Yeah, I brought that point up, but business-wise, or just, I don't know, in terms of their needs and what I feel would... Brent, would you?
Sure. The, I think that what we're trying to achieve here is, like you said, to make sure that people aren't rushing down their alcohol to leave, but they don't actually have to leave at 10:00. They can stay there till 10:30, and people often do. So, I think our problem's kind of already solved.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, okay, that's fine.
Okay, you've heard the motion and the unreadiness, and now, are you ready to vote? So, the motion that there wasn't any amendment, so as it stands, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstention?
Abstaining.
One abstention, thirteen in favor. All right. Altadena Filming Committee.
I will put on my filming, my film committee hat, and I have a report that Anne Coleman gave me for the filming committee. So, let me just read this report. Information, okay. "The committee is pleased to report that Film LA, in agreement with the Department of Public Works, will now require that the narrow section of New York Drive between Lake Avenue and Allen be posted 'No Parking' on both sides of the street. This new policy will make the area around a location shoot on the narrow parts of New York Drive safer and will help maintain the normal flow of traffic." So, that is something, that is something new. Obviously, they park the vans on one side of the street, but when they post 'No Parking' ahead of time, it'll be posted on both sides of the street.
Wait, how does that... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How does that help? So, you're saying that neither the residents nor the film crew can park on either side of the street on New York Drive during filming?
What we're, what they're talking about is, ahead of time, they post 'No Parking' ahead of time, when there's going to be a film shoot. They will post, and this is for narrow streets in particular, and on New York Drive, because that's where the issue really came up big time.
Right, right.
So, they will post both sides of the streets, 'No Parking.' The film trucks will end up parking only on one side of the street. That leaves the other side of the street empty.
So, the cast and crew will not park on the other side of the street?
That would be, nobody, exactly.
But the residents can?
No, no, nobody, nobody can. During that film shoot, you'll only, you'll see the...
They'll have to go into their driveway.
Into their driveways. Right.
But the point, I mean, that's in my sense, right? So, yeah, the point is that New York Drive, I mean, I sat in a car and had my side window, I mean, side mirror taken off by somebody driving down New York Drive. When you parked on both sides and people are going back and forth, and it's four across, it's too skinny.
It's too small.
And those trucks stick out much wider than a car.
Right, exactly.
So, basically, what we're saying is, the trucks will stick out wider than a car, but the other two lanes actually get all the way to the curb.
Exactly, yes, that's the idea.
All right, thank you.
And, "Earlier this month, the committee met with representatives of the Altadena Sheriff's Department, the California Highway Patrol, and the filming industry. The committee shared comments from the community regarding safety and parking concerns and the role that officers play at a location shoot. The committee also shared comments from location managers, period. There was much discussion about how to enforce the standard permit condition that prohibits cast and crew from parking on area streets. One participant thought the area streets needed to be defined better. Parking tickets could be issued to cars parked in a temporary no-parking zone, but seldom are issued. Lastly, an officer pointed out that residents who would like help from the law officer in getting out of their driveway safely or having crew cars removed from the areas should know that officers really do appreciate being addressed with courtesy." So, thanking, they're thanking you in advance. I'm repeating, okay. And lastly, lastly, the filming committee would like to remind everyone to attend and participate in the Town Hall on Filming, which will be here next Tuesday at the Community Center at 7:00 p.m. There are flyers on the piano in the back, and just to encourage everybody to come, and come a few minutes early, I'm bringing cookies, so, I hope that helps. That is the, that's it for the filming committee.
Thank you. Moving on to any questions?
Oh, yes, are there any other questions?
Are you with the change on New York Drive, are you gonna notify the residents? Is that a big change for the residents, if you're having no parking on either side, the residents along that strip?
No, I don't think really, because the, I mean, there is a no, mark parking, that'll say 'No Parking' on one side now, anyway.
Oh, okay, so, okay, all right, if they're used to not parking, okay, that's fine then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Election Committee, that'll be you again.
And my other hat? My last hat? Okay. I sent everybody last week a copy of the 2017 election rules, which we are required to approve prior to the election. In fact, we're supposed to be approving it now. I asked if there were any corrections and did not receive any comments back on that, corrections or additions. Just to, you know, refresh your memory, the changes from last year are primarily to do with the dates. So, I hope I got them, I think I got all the dates corrected. The only other, oh, one, the other change, one change would be that we can't have the applications returned to the library, because the library's gonna be closed for a period of time, so they'll be coming back to the Community Center. And on page two, under Voting Section, that is the direct change, and it will read, "Voters must show definite proof of name and residency relative to voting in their census tracts. Driver's licenses, California ID cards, checking accounts, or utility bills are example of this type of proof." And this is taken pretty much directly from the bylaws, so, but those are the only changes. Are there any other, anything that we missed? Any questions? Does anybody have any questions on this? In that case, I think I, if there are no questions, then I would move that we accept the 2017 election rules as printed.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, councilmembers, you have heard the 2017 election rules presented. There's a motion to accept it and second it properly by councilmember Hubby. You ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? Okay.
May I just make a comment as election chair, because I'll be making a report every month from now through, till we're done with the elections this year. Comment briefly to those of you who, whose term is up this year and will decide whether you're going to run again or not run again. Technically, you have until, what's the right date here? When the applications are going to be due in, completed, which will be on May the 12th, you have really up until that date to decide if you're going to run again or not. I'm not going to pressure anybody that you've got to turn in your application or make any announcements early. It might be nice if you, in fact, you do know, are you going to be running again, are you not going to be running again? If you'd like to share as soon as possible, I'm sure would be appreciated by members of your census tracts and me, just because I'm curious to know. I know that some people have to think a lot about what you're going to do, and I appreciate that, so, the sooner you can, you know, it's up to you when you want to make any announcements, whether you're running again or not running again.
Is that what you're saying, is that if we announce to the public that somebody's not running, then more people may step forward to fill that slot, because they, maybe it's a long-term person that's been on for a long time, and they just don't feel like, we have a lot of people that run unopposed, and then at the last minute, people are deciding, the last minute, not to run, and then we have empty census tracts because everybody thought you were running, I mean, we have nobody running in a census tract, that kind of stuff, so, okay.
And to those of you who are not running again, who won't run until next year, I'm asking you all for your help, because one person cannot manage an election by themselves. So, I would, I would like to see everyone who is not going to be running to be involved some way in the election itself. I need to form a committee, so I'm going to ask those of you who are not running, please let me know. You can tell me after the meeting, you can send me an email in the next few days if you're interested in working on the election committee, because I'd like to make sure that, you know, as many people as can will be actually working with me on the committee. Maybe what you are willing to do or able to do is going to be to work at the polling site. That can be something that you can do, too, but I definitely need some people that are going to work with me on the committee, so, I appreciate your help in advance. Any questions?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sir.
Have you considered asking any members of the broader community to join your committee?
Absolutely, absolutely, and I will do that as soon as I find out where the council members are that are going to actually be on the committee with me, because I would like to make sure that we're spread around and that it's not everybody that lives in one part of Altadena, and we've got people, absolutely, I need to have somebody from the, from the rest of the community on. Yes, sir.
Will your committee have to have meetings?
Well, probably at least one or two, yeah.
Can we talk on the phone?
Of course, of course, of course. But every, but there will be, need to be a couple, especially in the beginning, as we determine what needs to be done. It's just way easier to do it, you know, in a group, but we'll work it out.
Okay, thank you so much. The next thing is the Altadena Public Library. Mindy will not be here, but she sent me an email. First of all, I had made a note here before I got her email. The main library grand reopening will be June 10, so, June 10. So, let me go ahead and read what I received from Mindy Kote, the director at the Altadena Library. It says, "Remember that the main library will be closed starting Monday, March 13, and will reopen May 1. While the main is closed, the branch will be open seven days a week, and the updated schedule of all times will be on your web, on our webpage, that is, the library webpage. Our second Saturday in March will be fantastic. We have the rumba on Saturday, March 11, starting at 6:30 p.m. They are a group of amazing musicians who play gypsum, rumba, music. You won't be able to stay in your seat. Mark your calendars now for..."
There's some excitement in this.
Yeah. Hey, you'll be rumbraing on whatever it is.
We're selling.
Okay. Hey, I am not Mindy, so, I'm just reading what she wrote here, so...
She has her hair.
That's right. Mark your calendars now for the summer reading kickoff, grand reopening party, and 50th anniversary celebration on Saturday, June 10. We will, we will have amazing musicians and act, including Cromer for the children, and Anthix Performance doing hip-hop. Look, it's gonna be a lot of information and a lot of fun. We want to make answering your questions easy. Take a look at our website, and it is www.altdinallibrary.org, and you will see a box on the bottom right that says... on the bottom right that says, "Let's Talk." Just type in your questions and you will quickly and easily receive an answer. If you want to be on the mailing list and get all this exciting news automatically, just send a note with your email address noting you want to be added to the mailing list. Until, see you next month. Thanks, Mindy." Okay, so that's the report from the Altadena Library. Do we have anyone from the Parks and Recs? Okay, no one. Chamber Billy's not here. Collaborate Pasadena?
Okay. I do have a report here. The meeting was held at the Flint Ridge Center on January 25, 2017. The new director, Lisa Cavlier, called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. We learned about the recent Collaborate Pasadena work group activities and the roles of the Leadership Council. Lila Gergis, the Director of the Office of the Young Child, gave a presentation on the Early Development Instrument, its purpose and goals. Laura Zacher, Mary Donnelly Crocker, and Gloria Sanica were selected to represent the Collaborate Pasadena at Mayor Terry Tornick's joint meeting of the Pasadena City Council and Pasadena Unified School District's annual event. The event is scheduled to take place on Thursday, February the 16th, and will be held at the Pasadena City Hall. We determine the order of speakers and refine the content of our presentations. Lisa Cavlier and Brian Berry gave a presentation of the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year, and it was discussed and approved. The Marketing and Communications Committee gave an overview of the group, the group updates, the new director press release, and the new website. A discussion was held regarding the Collaborate Pasadena Leadership Council group photo. We set priorities for the next month's meeting, and the meeting was adjourned at 7:30. The meeting was very productive, and I look forward to next month's meeting. Now, there will be a reception for the new director, Lisa Cavlier, on March the 8th from 4 till 7, and Okori has the exact address and information on where it's going to be because at the meeting, they told us it was going to be somewhere else. But when I got my invitation, it's where Okori's going to tell us because I don't remember. I have the invitation at home.
Okay.
And that concludes my presentation.
Well, unfortunately, I don't have it. You know, I, I know I have it somewhere, but you know.
Because you mentioned it earlier.
Yeah.
You mentioned it earlier.
La Casa de Arroyo.
Right.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I know it's somewhere here. Hold on.
La Casita. Sorry. I thought it was a bigger house. I didn't know it was a small house.
So that's it.
Okay. Yeah. It is, it says, "La Casita de Arroyo, 177 South Arroyo Drive," and that is in Pasadena, March 8, 4 to 7 PM. Okay, then the 41st, thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Sanica? Okay, moving on to 41st Assembly. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you. I would like to echo the thank you for the council members that were able to physically participate in the homeless count, and also a thank you to those of you who were able to do a great outreach. And to my co-chair here, I would like to thank Ann for stepping in when she knew I could not be there. So thank you very much. And thank you to all of the volunteers who participated in the Altadena Homeless Count, all the community volunteers. Special thanks to Albert Gomez, LA County Parks and Recreation. He was the Parks and Recreation, obviously, was our sponsor. And I thank Mr. Gomez for working with us closely and securing the Loma Alta Park for the deployment site. And of course, a spec, special thank you to Assemblymember Holden for providing the light refreshments for all the volunteers. I would like to thank Okori again for making the announcement for the open house for Assemblymember Holden, which will be on March 2. On March 2, Assemblymember Holden will announce the Woman of the Year, who happens to be Jaleen Mosley, President of Flint Ridge Center. He will also be honoring women of distinction, and yours truly, Judy Matthews is one of the ones, and I found out. Yay. So I found, I just found out today. So we do have a representative, yeah. So if you can come, come and take a picture. Yeah, okay. So I would like to say that, and I'm going to keep this one short. And Brent, this is the one I told you about. He's gone?
Yeah. He's had to go.
I'll send it to him. If you remember, October of last year, the Pasadena Friendship Community Development Corporation, in collaboration with Averson School, with Census Track 460301, and local businesses within the community, we conducted a community service day, and I know I shared that with all of you. The same service is going to be again on April 29. And anyone, if you have three homes in your area that needs repairs, house painting, trash removal, you can contact me and I'll get you in contact with the person that is going to be responsible for taking a list. The list is already started. And there is no money to be, to take care of this. These are own, this is businesses, various corporations, and just neighbors being neighbors. So we want to do three homes in the same neighborhood, if we possibly can, on April 29. That's my report.
Okay, thank you so much. And we, moving along here. The next one is the Census Track Reports on 460301.
First, I'll go first. Me, me and Judy Matthews represent Northwest Altadena, and I just want to thank Judy for getting involved in Map Your Neighborhood. I participated on January 28th in my first neighborhood Map Your Neighborhood meeting, and it was very productive. It was held by Allison Cook, and she did a great job. A couple of people from the neighborhood who I had seen but never met came out and supported the, the matter, and we had a good discussion, and we're going to have some continued discussions. So if you haven't been involved in Map Your Neighborhood in your area in Altadena, I recommend that you do so. It is a great way not only to network among, among residents within the community, but also to brainstorm ideas, and that's a good thing.
Correct.
Okay, and I'm going to chime in on that as well. Map Your Neighbors on the furthest northwest end of Altadena. We are reorganizing because we noticed that there's so many new young people and children in the neighborhood that we find it to be very important to make sure everyone has been trained. So we will be setting up training into five groups because of the area. Floridita Drive will have five groups, and I believe La Vina will have three, and I believe the Meadows will have three. And I've already sent an email to Karen to inform her of that. And we are inviting those who have not done a Map Your Neighbor before to the Floridita Farms' first meeting, follow-up meeting. And the dates will be provided at our next town council meeting.
Any questions for Councilmember Matthews? Okay, 460302.
Okay, I just have a couple of things. About, I guess about two or three months ago, there was a global relief box that was placed over on Fair Oaks and Ventura. And then it'd be, it, it started out where people were recycling clothes and shoes, I guess, for homeless or whatever, and then it just became a dump site. So I was, have been working with Public Works, Sergio at Public Works, and we got rid of the, the global dump box. That's what I started calling it because they started putting everything there, you know, and I started getting some emails and calls. And so we got rid of that and cleaned up the corner, and then they were still putting some things, and Sergio just kind of took it upon himself to monitor that area. And every time they put a couch or something out there, he was really picking it up. So we got together, and Sergio took the lead on it, but we, we were able to get a no dumping sign, a real no dumping sign, and it was just placed on Monday over on, it's on Ventura and, and Fair Oaks, right in the alley on the side of where the Baja Ranch Market is because that's where they were putting the, everything, just in the alley and then on the corner there. And, and even after we got the sign up, I was coming home Friday, and I actually saw a man drive his car there, take out an old couch or whatever, and put it, and, and put it there. You know, this was even after the no dumping sign, but I just wanted to thank Public Works and Sergio in particular for follow-up and for them putting that sign there. And then the second thing is, we had during, during our volunteer recruitment in support of the Collaborate Pasadena Reading Partners Third Grade Reading Initiative, we had a book drive. And the book drive was sort of extended. Well, we raised, well, we actually collected over 250 books, and they were, they were presented to Jackson Elementary School on January the 25th at their ELAC meeting. And the parents and the teachers and the principal, they were just so appreciative. And we had the book drive because during the reading portion of this, the children, we're trying to increase their reading scores. And the children, once they get into reading, they want to take a book home. And so they start off at the beginning of the school year with so many books, but then when they take the books home, now they don't have enough to, to go to the end of the school year. So with the extra 250, it sort of, you know, it's helping them this school year anyway. And we're planning to try to have a volunteer recruitment annually, one month before school starts. And then the last thing is we, those schools that were in focus, there were three Altadena schools in focus. They were Jackson, Altadena, and then Elliott Middle School. Elliott Middle School could not receive the Reading Partners because it's for elementary school children. So we are, we have now focused our attention on Elliott Middle School, and we're trying to get Club Aspire to, in that school. And hopefully, we'll, we'll know something about that, at least by the end of next month, if we'll actually have them in there. And then the last thing is, I've been working with the Pasadena Unified School District on their Farm to School Committee, and, and I'm trying to implement some food harvested drying centers to complement their school gardens. And that's the last thing.
Oh, let me just comment on that one thing, Gloria. I wanted to thank you for the rain barrels at the Map Your Neighborhood. One of the individuals mentioned that the rain barrel situation was really helping them. So you did a wonderful job on that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Your name is floating around. That's good.
Thank you.
Gloria, can I make, can I make one more?
You got a barrel too?
Gloria, just to piggyback on your people dumping things, you know, and everything, make sure everybody realizes that the process is that you can call Clean LA, which, I don't know, it's like 888 Clean LA, you can look it up online, it's Clean LA. You can make your complaint to them about where you see, like bulky, you know, like a sofa that's, right? And they will contact Athens, and Athens has 48 hours to pick it up. So I know there are a lot of, there's illegal dumping around the corner from me, and I just know there's a lot. If there's a, a house where people have left, like in my case, we, people live in that house. I know it came out of that house. But I can call Clean LA. Clean LA will call Athens. Athens will contact the, the customer, and, you know, Athens will do a bulk pickup. All they have to do is call them, you know, so.
But actually, Athens and Public Works were working together on that.
On your, on your bid, yeah.
On that, on that, that whole situation because it got, it really got out of hand.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, there was so much stuff in that little area. It was in the street. People had to drive around it.
Yeah, no, you did, you did, you did a good thing. It's just that I just wanted to remind everybody because I just see illegal stuff laying around here and there, all over. So if you see it, call, and they don't ask you who you are or anything, just, you know, call and make the report, and Athens and the county will take care of it, so.
Thank you so much. Speaking of dumping and picking up behind yourself, I actually get, the people that helps us out here, they, they were asking us to please clean up as well when we, before we leave, take our stuff out, yeah. So if you're one of the people that leaves things, please do your very best to do that. I will, I would like to entertain a motion for adjournment.
I didn't get any comment cards for them. So there's none? Anybody? Any? Oh, no, I'm talking about any public, general public comment?
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess motion. I'll, I'll make the motion.
I didn't, I didn't get it.
Since Brent isn't here, I'll second that.
Okay, so you don't have any, no cards?
No.
Okay, any motion?
Motion.
Okay. All right, so motion properly seconded, midnight adjourned, 9:46.